I would do that. You know, something one better.
The April 18th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of each council meeting, which is generally the first and third Tuesdays of the month, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues of city business. This portion of the meeting is from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers, and if you want to address the council at that time, please call 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If there is time after scheduled speakers are through, anybody from the audience that happens to be there can address the council also. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. We have a number of presentations today. First of all, we have the Hennepin County City Attorney, Mike Freeman, here to give us an update on what's happening in his office.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come and say hello and talk a little bit about crime and what's happening and what's not. First off, I wanted to start out by commending your chief and your police officers at Eden Prairie. They do a great job. We have a close working relationship, which prosecutors can't prove a case if the cops don't give us the evidence. But I also want to thank you, and I can say this as a former eight-year veteran of the Minnesota Senate who voted for three tax increases and got reelected. If you all wouldn't provide the resources, you wouldn't have such a good police force. And I know from having to vote for taxes, just like you have to, it's not the easiest thing we do as elected officials, but it makes a difference. This is a good police force. They're well-educated, they're well-trained. Policing is a lot harder work than it used to be. They face situations, very difficult situations, often out of nowhere, and they don't have much time to think through or plan it. As I said to the city attorney, we have an opportunity in most cases to stop and deliberate, deliberate about what we should do. They don't, but you should be very proud of them. And the results are, the crime in Eden Prairie is really remarkably low. Property crimes generally decreased almost every year in the last five or six. Thefts have decreased by two-thirds in the last year. The violent crime caseload is very low, and over the last three years assaults have been cut in half. That's all commendable. But I usually like to go back and to look at some statistics you may not have heard of before. And so the state provides some statistics, and let me just frame it, they go back to 1980. The population of Eden Prairie in 1980 was 16,000 people. Today, it's 63,000, or about three times more. And yet, the violent crime has only gone up two times, not three. The property crimes have only gone up by one-third. Now, property crimes of 722 in 1960 and 958 in 2015. That's commendable. That says something, not just about the police and the prosecutors, and we like to think we do our part. Our statistics are basically 90% of the cases we charge, we either get the guilty plea or we get a guilty verdict at time of trial. If it was a whole lot higher than that, then we probably were not taking some of the cases that we should, particularly domestic abuse and sexual abuse and child abuse, which they're much harder because you have fewer witnesses and you have families divided. If we were much higher, we wouldn't be taking those. If we were a lot lower, then I'd have to be sending prosecutors, including myself, back to law school to learn some things. But, you know, the community organizations make a lot of difference. The Community Watch and all of those different groups make a whole lot of difference. So I think that you should feel good about those. We actively prosecute people whose motivation for their crime is greed. If their problem's addiction, as so many drug users are, we can do something probably a lot better than jail or prison for them by getting them to the treatment they need. And that's what our drug court does, and we have one of the best in the country. Some people commit crimes because of mental health issues. We try to deal with their underlying illness. A lot of people who served in the military, as I did, have come back with problems, particularly if they have more than one tour in places like Afghanistan. And now we work with our mental health court and our veterans' court to get additional services from the VA, and that's been very helpful in reducing crime. But the ones with greed, well, if they're sell drugs, they deserve to be in the big house. But we have the one that I just have to comment on because it's kind of ingenious. You think about people who really are smart and can think things through, and why don't they use that for something productive? Well, David Pollard recently pled guilty for two nearly 40 break-ins he did. Pollard's modus operandi in his plan was he would go to theaters, like the Chan-Hasten Theater or the Guthrie, and he would write down the license plate numbers of cars where people were being dropped off. Because he presumed, and he was basically right, those people would be gone for several hours while they're at the theater. He'd check the on-lice registration, of which if you, your police, your license plate, you can get the address to, he'd go rob them. And he was really doing quite well, and nobody could quite figure out why their houses were... Finally, someone figured it out. In fact, it was Yuradana Police Department who helped us solve that crime. So, congratulations, Chief. That was a great one and kind of fun to know about. What's not fun is the amount of opiates that exist. You know, people have way too many prescription drugs in their medicine cabinet. It's shocking, the number of kids who will come over for a party at your house, and you can be right there, and they excuse themselves, go to the bathroom, and the next thing you know, all those opiates are gone. And the kids use them, and when they finish for the opiates, they get the heroin because it's cheaper. And the problem, the double problem with heroin is you don't know ever what you are getting. And there are some dealers who are just consciously, deliberately mixing heroin with bad stuff and killing people. We started about four years ago prosecuting four third-degree homicide cases for drug dealers. We were up to 18 last year. What we hope to do by this is to take the profit motive out and to let these folks that don't come around and put this junk out there. And we've been surprisingly successful. The good news continues about the prison population, which is flat and if not down. Many of us felt that we were sending too many drug users to prison. We've now changed that sentencing structure, so we're doing better. And we're also having some real progress with juveniles. Even though juveniles don't end up in adult prisons, they are involved in some very expensive incarceration at times. And the number of juveniles in the Juvenile Justice Center in Minneapolis is down 70%, 70% over the last six years. We just have better ways to deal with kids. And let me just say, since I think I'm with a group of friends, there was a time, age 13, little Mikey Freeman wasn't real smart. It was Halloween, and he went out and found an earth mover. Now, how little Mikey Freeman knew how to start that earth mover, I can't imagine how I did that, but I did, and of course, I stalled it. And the cops came, and they want to know who I was. When I said Tom Smith, they said, "No, no, 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 no. You're the governor's kid. You're little Mikey Freeman. We're going to take you down to the station and call your dad." I said, "No, no, I'll do anything. Don't call my father." Not only was he governor, but he was a former Marine Corps Colonel. And he came to pick me up himself. We got in the car, and he said, "What in the hell did you do?" "No, no, no, don't answer now. Let's wait till we get home." And you remember George Orwell's book, 1983, and there was room 101? My father's office in the basement was room 101. Little Mikey had a really tough hour. He never touched me. He didn't have to. And I never committed a crime again. And Minneapolis cops did the right thing. They had cop diversion. Well, we do a lot of diversion with juveniles. I don't want them even to have a record at all. And if it's little stupid stuff, kids shouldn't get a record. Now, I'm not going to inquire as much as I'd like to of your city attorney if he or did something stupid like that, but my guess, either he or one of his friends did. And let's not get their record messed up. Statute of limitations is gone, Rick, so we're okay on that.
Does the jail in Tibet count?
We're trying to spend a lot of time with kids and divert their actions if they even get to us, so there's no record. We've been very successful with truancy in our Be at School program, and working closely with your school district has been very successful, particularly getting young kids to school. If you're an eight-year-old, you want to be in school. But if your mom wants you to babysit the three-year-old so she can go to work, well, that's okay, and that's an okay thing to do on the weekends. But during the week, kid's job is to go to school to learn, just like many of us have jobs to care for our families. And so we've done well with Be at School, with truancy. We've got a pilot going now on curfew. Same deal. If a kid's out at 2:00 in the morning, they're either committing a crime or they may well be a victim of a crime. So we need to keep them there. But, you know, a future employer, 10 years later, doesn't need to know that little Brad was out late when he was 15 or 16. You simply don't need to do that. And that's part of their records. But if I never file the case, it's not. And so we use the nonprofit, The Link, and we try to figure out what's going on with the family. If it's my eight-year-old babysitting for the two-year-old, we need to work with the mom to provide the resources, the shoes, the lunches, the transportation. Let's fight through those things and get that kid in school. And that's a good crime-fighting thing. Let me close with some things that are a little different than it was when I was first privileged to be Hennepin County Attorney from 1991 to 99. People are much more involved in their criminal justice system, and they want to know what we're doing. Accountability is an important concept, and so is transparency. And so when Jamar Clark was tragically killed by Minneapolis police officers, it wasn't good enough to use a grand jury anymore because the rules of the grand jury say, "We can't say who appeared there and what was presented, and if they decide not to charge, we just say, 'Grand jury decided not to charge.'" And the first question, "Well, who were the grand jurors?" "I can't tell you." "What is the evidence presented?" "I can't tell you." That just doesn't work anymore. So, in the Jamar Clark, when all the discovery and all the work investigation was done, I and people in my office made that decision. And the lack of evidence for wrongdoing, criminal wrongdoing by the police is pretty clear. Jamar Clark's DNA was all over the officer's gun, and you simply don't grab a cop's gun, period. Police officers could have acted differently in the 30 seconds before Clark was taken down, but that's not criminal. And my job was to decide the criminality. We put all of our evidence up into the website the same day I announced it. We had 18,000 hits to our website to read all the police reports, all the forensics, the autopsy, and over 300,000 people hit in the first month looking at the videos. Everybody thinks videos are going to answer all the questions. Simply, they don't in most of the cases. Once in a while, they do, but certainly, they didn't in this one. But people got a chance to see it and make their own decision. There's some people who simply do not support the decision I made. I'm comfortable with it. I spent over 38 hours reading over three days every single report. I waited until the end because I didn't want to be impacted by other people had done that. I think that was the right decision. What we have to do is continue to reduce gun violence, which remains an enormous problem. The disputes that we had when we were kids, we've resolved with fists. Now, that wasn't very smart either, but, you know, you can recover from a broken nose. You can't recover from a police shot. So we have lots of work to do. I think we have some progress that's being made. I welcome the opportunity, Madam Mayor, to be allowed to come here. If someone said, "It's nice to see you in person instead of on the TV," as an elected official, I got to be honest with you, I don't mind being on the TV once in a while. And I'll probably need a lot of that when I run for reelection in 2018. But it's fun to be here, and thank you.
Well, thank you for what you do. I'm sure that that Jamar Clark case was very difficult to deal with, and I'm sure there was a lot of, a lot of emails going to your office from all over the world with suggestions on how you should be handling it. I'm thinking of the Cecil the Lion case, and we didn't even have any authority, and we were getting all kinds of emails from all around the world on that issue, just because the hunter was from our area. So I'm sure that that was a very difficult case, and you guys do a great job. I had the pleasure of touring your office as part of my position with the Hennepin County Capital Budget Task Force, and you would not believe his office. I don't mean your personal office. I mean, your department is incredibly cramped in there. You're using space, you're on top of each other, and you get things done. It's just amazing. But I know you need more space, and they're working on that.
Well, good. We are the fifth-largest law firm in the state of Minnesota with 190 lawyers and 400 employees and a $50 million budget. And I congratulate you on giving your police department the money it needs to operate. The county board is pretty doggone appropriate in their funding for us. We're not flush, and as you've said, Mayor, thank you, and I'm going to quote you next time I have a budget discussion. We have the people, we're pretty crowded, but we've got wonderful, wonderful people who... We had somebody interview with us three months ago. She had 14 years, including with Jones Day Law Firm, which is one of the best in the country, the Second Circuit clerk in the Second Circuit. She took a $125,000 pay cut to come join us. Now, that's a public servant. That's a lot of money, and we're very glad to have her. She's just superb. So, thank you, members.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out today. Appreciate it. The next item is a presentation of the Sun Current Reader's Choice Best Rec Center Award for our community center. Yes?
All right. Well, it's my privilege, my name's Valerie Burley, I'm the community center manager. It's my privilege to present this award tonight. Before I kind of get into the award itself, I just wanted to kind of recap how different we look from past years when we won this award, too. And in large part, that's thanks to all of you. We've gone under some major renovations. We look much different than we did just two years ago. And now we're approaching almost a million visitors that come through our doors annually due to the expansions we've had and the programs we've been able to provide. So I just wanted to share a couple other quick facts about the community center with you tonight. So due to the aquatics expansion, we've seen a lot of families coming through our doors as we hoped and anticipated, with programs like tot time, open swim, special events, just like this last weekend, we're able to offer a floating Easter egg hunt. So just kind of different things we couldn't do before, and we've seen family memberships go up almost 30% since we opened Phase Two last April. So we've been very pleased, and we know the families have been, too. Additionally, our senior members continue to grow the foot traffic in our building. On any given day between 9:00 and 11:00, you'll see upwards of 250-plus seniors in our facility going to classes, utilizing equipment, and then staying after and kind of enhancing their social circles between coffee, lunch, and birthday celebrations. So that's really fun to see, and a really big group that we serve and see growing. And then lastly, we still are a very popular place for community meetings to be held. We have approximately 300 meetings and rental rooms in 2016, which equates to thousands of people coming and seeing us that maybe otherwise wouldn't, and seeing kind of the amenities and the services we're able to provide to the community. So, all great exposure that we've been able to get thanks to your help in getting the expansion project. But with this award, the Sun Current 2017 Reader's Choice Award for Best Rec Center has been awarded to us for, like I said, the third year in a row. And that award process is a six-week voting period for residents and kind of regional community online and in-print document. And other organizations, kind of like I said, region-wide, were recognized, too, so this does stem outside of Eden Prairie. But we're honored to again have the Eden Prairie Community Center recognized by our residents as a high-quality community asset, and we're very honored. So, without further ado, I'd like to invite Mayor Tara Lukens down to present you the award.
So I'm assuming, Valerie, this will go up in the community center with your continuing collection of awards like this? Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're accepting tonight a donation towards Arts in the Park from Anderson Windows. I'm Mr. Lott Hammer.
Yes, Your Honor, these continue to be popular. We're gaining a lot of support for this program. And the first one tonight is from Anderson Windows for $500.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the donation?
I would move to accept the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from Anderson Windows to go towards Arts in the Park event.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So that event is on May 20th at Purgatory Creek Park, and there'll be lots of information coming out in the paper and on our website about that. And Valerie, I meant to say, too, thank you so much for all that you guys do at the community center because having just a facility isn't enough. It's the programming and the staff that people come in and meet that makes it such a successful place. So thank you for everything you do. The next item is a donation for Arts in the Park from Skin Envy.
Yes, Your Honor, this is from Skin Envy, another local business, for $500 towards Arts in the Park.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from Envy Skin Clinic to go towards the Arts in the Park event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. So again, thank you to Anderson Windows for that donation and for Skin Envy making that wonderful donation, too. These things help us have these events for our community members. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to add, delete? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the city council workshop minutes? That meeting was held on Tuesday, April 4th.
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Anything to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Anything to pull for questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our one and only public hearing this meeting, which is the Kopesky Second Edition by HTPO. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, our only public hearing is a resolution for a planned unit development concept review and preliminary plat on 4.14 acres. This is properties located on the northeast corner of 82nd Street West and Dell Road, as I said, is 4.14 acres. The site previously included a one, a single-family house and garage. Both of those structures were demolished in the fall of 2016 when the well and septic systems were removed and demolished. The property is currently zoned rural and is guided for low-density residential development, and that low-density residential development allows for a density range between 0 and 2.5 units per acre. The proposed density for this project for the eight lots is 1.93 units per acre. Included in this project are four waivers. Three waivers are necessary as a result of the proposed outlot on the north side of the site, and the other waiver is a result of the over-length cul-de-sac, which is an existing condition. So you have a front yard setback waiver, cul-de-sac waiver, a rear yard setback waiver, and a wetland buffer waiver. The planning commission considered this at two meetings in March and ultimately recommended approval on a four-to-one vote at the March 27th meeting. And we have the project proponent here tonight, who will provide you with an overview and walk you through the project, and then staff and the proponent are here to answer any questions that you may have, along with what the public may have for the public hearing.
Thank you. If you could state your name for the record, that would be great.
Madam Mayor, councilors, my name is Charlie Howley, H-O-W-L-E-Y. I'm an engineer with HTPO right here in Eden Prairie. I'm representing the Kopesky brothers on their development. Longtime residents are the Kopeskis, a lot of family history, and this is kind of their last hurrah, if you will, here in town, and they are committed to making this a good development for the city. I think I'm going to rotate this this way. Sorry that you have to readjust the camera, but it's easier for me to speak north when I'm looking up on a paper. So, as you know, the project is off at Dell and 82nd. The previous development, some 20 years ago to the east, put a stub of Dove Court with the intention that this property would get developed in the future. It is proposed to be a cul-de-sac, I think for obvious reasons. We'd rather not punch a through street out to Dell Road, and Dove Court is already called a court, which usually means a cul-de-sac, and we feel having a cul-de-sac is the better use of the land. On the north of the property is an existing wetland that we are not impacting, and we are providing a buffer, a larger-than-average width buffer, and dedicating that to the city as an outlot. We are... Generally, the project drains in two directions, and it's split approximately there, draining north, draining to the south. We're in two separate subwatersheds, and so we have to treat this with two separate systems, if you will, because we can't change drainage patterns from one sub watershed to another. And that's why we have BMP1 up here to provide some water quality treatment and some volume reduction capabilities for the areas that drain to the north. We have a large BMP here to do the same thing for the property that drains to the west before it goes into the Dell Road storm sewer. We also have two other smaller BMPs, not on this plan and fairly insignificant, but nonetheless important, little what we call rock trenches right here along the property line and down here, to kind of capture and treat some of the water that we can't collect and send into these larger BMPs. The site is rolling in topography. It's got some steep slopes, nothing that would exceed the ordinance. It has trees on it, obviously, and that's probably going to be a lot of the discussion you'll hear tonight. So the development is eight lots of size and shape that, in our opinion, fits the neighborhood and the previous developments. We're not asking for any kind of increased density or minimum lot sizes to, you know, get more development onto this property than what it was ghost-platted for 20 years ago and to match kind of how all the other lots in the area are kind of platted as well. And the lots 1, 2, 3 are lookout, or sorry, walkout lots, and then 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 would be lookout lots. We prepared the grading plan to do that. There is an existing retaining wall on 82nd Street down on the There is an existing retaining wall on 82nd Street down on the south that is being removed, and there is an existing retaining wall along Dell Road here that is partially being removed. And the reason why, and these are in the right-of-way, by the way, and the reason why we're not removing the entire retaining wall along Dell Road, even though that may be a good policy for the city to think about, is the additional impacts to this area, grading tree removals. It was a good opportunity to save some perimeter buffer, some existing trees. What we've done since the start of the project is to hold a neighborhood meeting, meet with city staff, kind of follow all the procedural requirements that is laid out by your development Two different Planning Commission meetings where we went back and revisited some tree protection and grading, and what we've done there is we've kind of added some smaller, bolder-type retaining walls in various areas. We've pushed some homes back in an order to effort-saving more trees than what the original plan had. So I think that's kind of the long and short of it. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
I just have one question. In the Planning Commission meeting minutes, the lighting was brought up, and I think there was a concern that maybe there wasn't enough lighting. What was the resolution on that?
So, on the original plan, we did not show any proposed lighting in the cul-de-sac area. It was kind of presented and requested that maybe there should be a streetlight put at the end of the cul-de-sac to brighten it up, if you will, and the developer, we said, okay, sure, we can do that. I think the city staff is still reviewing kind of the placements of where they should go, maybe how many they should go, but the developer is ready to put in presumably the one streetlight that we need at the end there, and that's not an issue.
Okay. Mr. Ellis?
Yep, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom. We are planning on a light at the end of the cul-de-sac that the developer will install with their project. We're also entertaining the city installing a light on the existing Dove Court, where there's existing homes, where we heard there was a concern about a need for additional lighting. We're going to reach out to those adjacent property owners, make sure that's something that they would like to see, and if they're interested, we would pursue installing that light with Xcel Energy at a city cost.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Case.
I think, based on reading Planning Commission minutes, this is the, and Jan, I think you can confirm this, the third project to come through since our tree ordinance revision is what the Planning Commission minutes said. And I think the question was, is this the most complicated? It sounded like you had a little bit of a larger one, but this is probably pretty testing, at least, of our revised tree ordinance. So could you, I walked the property this afternoon, and it seemed like on the north side of Lot 7, there were a couple oak trees that I think would constitute our definition of heritage, and then the one that's huge that's being left on the south end of 7. But could you make comment as to how the new revision of the tree ordinance did impact this? Were there, were there any identified heritage trees? If so, one or two? Are you keeping some? Do you get extra points for saving a couple? Did it cost you extra to take down a couple?
Sure. Madam Mayor, counselor, maybe I will go to this plan here, which shows kind of the existing survey with the trees and the Xs of the trees that are to be removed. I believe we have five heritage trees on site, and one was poor quality, so it doesn't kind of factor in. And the rest, maybe I should go to my tree calculations. This might tell me so I can.
Do we have that page? I was looking for that page.
I, this was, this was part of all the plans that were submitted, so I presume you have them. But on this chart, it goes through, under the comments, it says what the heritage trees are. So we have heritage tree, heritage tree, but again, poor condition, heritage tree, heritage tree, heritage tree. And we are showing the removal of two heritage trees, but one of them is the one in poor condition, so again, not what we count. So we are using the latest ordinance, which we do have to pay more attention to the heritage trees than previously, and the replacement criteria is much, much higher. And what we did since the first submittal was save this, this is a heritage tree right here. So what we did is we pushed this home back and regraded the lot a little bit with the driveway slope to save that, because we heard loud and clear that heritage trees are a priority. The heritage tree that you're referring to, maybe at the rear of Lot 7, is there, and that, I believe, is the one that is in poor condition.
I think the one in poor condition was to the east side of it, but there were two.
We've got two trees here shown as significant tree. This one here is the heritage tree, and.
So my question is, and maybe this is of city staff, how did it work? So did, did this developer get credit for the one on the south side, the big one that got saved, they pushed the house back? So does that amount to significant caliber inches of credit? And then did we consequence on the north side of Lot 7? And then how did that come out in the wash? I just want to know how it worked.
Your Honor, Councilmember Case, the tree preservation ordinance seemed to work well on this lot. They did have adequate space to do the replacement, so my understanding was even with the first iteration, I think they were saving two out of the four heritage trees that we counted, and they were, based on feedback, able to save the third. But because of the open space and other features of this property, they were able to probably meet the requirements in a number of different ways, and the heritage tree just helped them with less replacement by being able to save.
When the math was done, it came out.
Right, definitely.
Okay, good.
It was definitely in their favor.
Okay. And then there are evergreen trees on Lot 8 on the south side, kind of wrapping that corner, and they're not, they're not probably, I don't know if they're significant, they might be large enough to be significant, but are they showing being saved there? Or, because I just think it's amazing block, and it'd be a shame, and they're on the edge of the property, so I feel like it'd be a shame to take them down.
Reading it right, they are being saved. I'm not seeing any Xs on that. Lot 8, if it's the east side, is that what you're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
I believe those are.
Southeast corner of Lot 8.
Correct.
Okay. And then my only final question is, when you talk about trenching at the backs of Lot 5, maybe a little bit into 8, there's some good tree mass cover in there that is a nice block between the current houses, but I'm assuming if you trench it, all that goes away?
Madam Mayor, councilors, this line here indicates where the grading limits would go to, which is right, pretty much right up to the property line. So everything is kind of going out, and that wasn't done because of the trenching. It was just done because of how the site had to grade to make this lot developable. Back here, we moved the trench inside of our grading limits so that it wouldn't impact more trees than we were. So to answer your question, the two smaller BMPs, the trenches, are not causing any additional natural vegetation to be removed.
That's all for now.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I had one question on the length of the cul-de-sac. Is that going to impair at all school buses being able to turn around in the cul-de-sac or fire engines being able to turn around?
Madam Mayor, councilors, the length of the cul-de-sac waiver is kind of depicted on this inset over here, which you can't see, but now you can, sorry.
Yeah.
And it has to do with the overall length, and I think the standard is 500 feet, and we're at 700 feet, but I, personally, I don't see there's any kind of negative impact to any sort of transportation movements, particularly school buses. The cul-de-sac itself is a city-standard cul-de-sac, so it, any cul-de-sac in the city gets the same sort of turnaround movement.
Good. Just wanted to make sure of that. Over time in Eden Prairie, at one point, we had had a problem with that, so. Also, maybe for staff, you know, if they keep a couple of these heritage trees to the point of moving back, you know, house, lots and things, does the new owner have to keep these trees, or can they just go cut them down where they're currently sitting? Because as we go, if we've started saving these trees and such, we almost need to make some provision that the owner can't just go cut them down if they're in good health either.
Councilmember Nelson, you know, my thought on this, because we spent quite a bit of time talking this through, is how we deal with this at the development level, but then when we got to the individual residential homeowners on lots throughout Eden Prairie, you weren't putting those restrictions on them.
I may be changing my mind if we go bend over backwards to keep the trees. It's known that they were kept at the development level, that at some point, the owners are responsible for keeping these trees while they're in good health, if it happened after, you know, after the stage of the ordinance, because I'd hate to go and keep all of these and then have someone come in and the first thing they do is say, well, that tree's too close to my house. I'm from some plain state, and I don't want it to be able to fall on my house, and they cut it down.
And to clarify, you know, that's the decision, you know, we're at with the current code as written, so as a council, you would have to reestablish that discussion. That's not the same with commercial. As you know, we spend a lot of time with commercial and how we enforce those landscaping plans and development agreements on commercial property. So I want to clarify that, that we don't follow up with individual homeowners with the tree removals, but we do deal with it on commercial property. That's, that's the current status.
Any other questions, council? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this development? Okay, if you'd come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
May I address from here?
Yeah, you're going to use the camera? Is that why you're sitting there?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, sir. My name's Steve Davies, D-A-B-I-E-S. I'm a resident of the existing neighborhood, and I'll, if we could pull this up.
Okay.
I'll do this, prefer to do this visually.
Yeah, the camera, please. Okay. There, you're up, you're on.
I don't know how that, is that projected? Is that going to work?
Well, is that glare, or is that something you have fitting? Okay.
Let me just tilt this a little bit. If it's going to work with the glare or not.
Move it a little to the right, maybe. There you go. Up a little bit. A little more, a little more, right there.
Perfect. Okay, good. So again, my name is Steve Davies, and I much appreciate the opportunity to address Madam Mayor and councilmembers. For reference, the property, I lost my pointer, sorry. The property in which I reside with my family is here, to the north of Dove Court. This is a Kopesky property line.
Mr. Davies, could you move the mic a little bit closer to your mouth? There you go. Is it on? There's a.
Yes, says live.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good. So, given the proximity of my property to the property line, the fate of this, of the Kopesky's piece of property is obviously of key interest to me and my neighbors. We participated in the, in the Planning Commission's meetings with some of my neighbors again here tonight. Just quick context, I have a very real appreciation for Eden Prairie, meaning that I don't take it for granted. I'm not a longtime resident. I moved here from the East Coast in 2003 with my family, lived elsewhere in Eden Prairie, just south of here, had a choice to move away, actually, to other parts of the world in 2014, and chose to stay in Eden Prairie, and this neighborhood is one of the reasons why. Eden Prairie, you know this well, I'm sure, consistently rates near the top of the places to live in the US, top five or 10 for the last 15 years, and that's one of the things that kept us here. It's a beautiful, beautiful city. I wanted to explain why I moved, because I moved to Dove Court, to this location, in 2014, and the reasons we chose this neighborhood were pretty well captured by one of the Planning Commission members in the hearing on March 27th. It was one of the members, obviously, well familiar with the neighborhood, and he said he had driven through it, and it's a beautiful neighborhood. It is. The tree canopy and the number of trees that were saved are superb, and we were literally smitten with the neighborhood. We love it. Now, and that really is one of the reasons I'm here tonight, simply put, the, the Planning Commission, in two hearings, we think, did a very nice job of listening to the substantive concerns from the existing neighbors, and yet, at the end of the whole process, as the meeting wrapped up, Ms. Ed Farah of the Planning Commission acknowledged the strong and consistent concerns of the existing neighbors in Dove Court and on 82nd Street, which is to the south of lots, I guess it would be 6, 7, and 8. And yet, he noted that those neighbors, myself included, were mistakenly assuming that the proposed Kopesky Second Edition is a part of Pines 2, and I want to quote here from the meeting minutes, which I think you have. He said, "This is not an extension of the Pines development." In other words, what he was saying is that this need not be consistent with what is already there. It's a separate and unique development, which should be allowed to go its own way, essentially." And he concluded, and again, I quote from the minutes, "Kopesky Second Edition should be considered a neighborhood of its own." And that was the rationale for essentially doing a nice job of listening to all of our concerns, but then in a four-to-one vote, sort of ignoring them, and approving the plan and getting it to your attention tonight. So simply put, for those of us that are residents of the existing neighborhood and on Dove Court specifically, that comment that the Kopesky Edition should be considered a separate and independent neighborhood is just, is really a jarring comment. Were it true, then perhaps the decision and the four-to-one vote could be defended, but anyone that's driven down Dove Court, and I appreciate, Mr. Case, that you've done that and actually, obviously, walked around the land, I really appreciate the time you put in there.
I just bought your house this afternoon, yeah. In fact, I've been in your house, I know who you bought it from.
Thank you. Anyone that's driven down Dove Court, and incidentally then had to turn around in my driveway, would question the logic of the Planning Commission. So let me, let me show you what I mean. When you drive down Dove Court, and let me just, first of all, just show you visually, because I'm a visual guy, and these black and white drawings don't do it for me, this is sort of Google Earth view of the neighborhood. I've boxed in both the existing neighborhood here and then the beautiful tree, four acres of the Kopesky Brothers' own. If you zoom in on that, you then see as a close-up, Dove Court stopping here. If you drive west on Dove Court into the Pines 2 neighborhood and drive west, this is what you come to. Simply put, the road stops dead. Mr. Case, you clearly appreciate this. You probably turned right in my driveway. It's clearly abbreviated, it's a work in progress, and something that's begging to be finished out. There's clear indications that the Pines 2 neighborhood was always intended to be finished out, and two key facts, I think, were that the previous developer, Carlston Inc., was required by the city of Eden Prairie to do two things, some 15, 16 years ago, had to run utilities in, into the area, Kopesky's land, and that is clearly shown on what Charlie showed you. This is the utility easement, where power, water, like, and sewage was run into here, anticipating that the neighborhood would be finished out. Carlston Inc. was also required to provide, and this shows clearly, the trees that had to be cleared to make way for those utilities that were run in, in anticipation of finishing out the neighborhood, not establishing an entirely new neighborhood. Carlston Inc. was also required to do something else, and this is a drawing from 2000, year 2000 drawing, incidentally done very capably by HTPO, who are involved in the current development. And what I would call your attention to here is this proposed temporary turnaround. It was proposed then, it's since been executed, and it is basically a sort of temporary cul-de-sac right here, which was executed. This is what it looks like. This is from Google Street View. You can see where literally my front yard has been taken out with blacktop, and on the south side of Dove Court, the same thing, to allow a temporary turnaround right here. While well-intended, this hasn't worked very well, and I think there's no better, clearer indication that Dove Court deserves and needs its own cul-de-sac as an integral part of the current neighborhood, not as an independent neighborhood, but as an integral part of the current neighborhood. the current neighborhood than this picture. Again, from Google Street View, this is several years ago, and I'd ask you to sort of compare that with what I showed you today with Dove Court. The road stops dead here, but what's happened is that in their innocence, visitors to Dove Court have created their own. They finished out the neighborhood themselves with a dirt cul-de-sac. Quite messy, and this is literally a turnaround created by garbage trucks, by snowplows, and by drivers. This is the situation some years ago. So frustrating was this to the prior owner, from whom I purchased the house, that he worked with the appropriate parties to basically bring in these, I think it's called a Jersey Wall, of these structures to block it, to stop the mess. It worked. It was simple, it was effective. It's also frankly an eyesore, obviously, not attractive at all. So let me just sum up before I move on, because I've shown you a lot of charts and made quite a few comments. I want to summarize some key points to make sure that we, as the existing, the residents and soon-to-be neighbors, are not misunderstood. We clearly realize what the planning commission members noted as they wrapped up, that the Kapeski second addition is not a Pines 3, we get that, but I hope I've made it clear at the same time why it cannot be considered an independent neighborhood. It isn't, clearly not. It will finish out beautifully, this neighborhood. So as such, in this, what you've seen from Charlie, will clearly be a finishing out of our neighborhood. Our ask is very simple, is that the homes in the Kapeski second addition are consistent in valuation, and we're concerned that that's not necessarily going to be the case with what's planned. I also want to be very clear before I go on about one point, because I feel there's been a misunderstanding with the Kapeski's. Our interest, the interest of myself and all my neighbors, is absolutely in seeing the Kapeski's property developed in a way that gets Wayne and his brother the greatest possible financial benefit for this beautiful four acres they've owned for many years. I say this simply because I get the sense from some often heated discussions with Ms. Kapeski, as recently as two weeks ago when he came out, that he's of the impression that we don't want this land developed, that we want to forestall progress, and that is absolutely not the case. If I go back to this drawing, I hope it's very clear, when we bought our property in 2014, we looked forward eagerly to seeing this neighborhood finished out, to getting rid of this eyesore, and finishing out the neighborhood in a way that was win-win, simply put. You know, brings the greatest possible financial return to the Kapeski's, but also is accretive to the equity that I and my neighbors have in our existing homes. So, John Kirk of the planning commission, when he wrapped up, said very clearly, "We should not try," and this is again quoting from the minutes, "we should not try and duplicate the development to look like the Pines, we should just try to be consistent." He did a nice job of explaining that the commission, the planning commission, has to balance the needs and demands of the city with its ordinances that have made Eden Prairie such a beautiful place to live, of the developer and of the existing neighbors. We commend that approach, and that's absolutely what we favor, but we fear that what's being done is not going to be consistent. I want to explain why. Simply put, we're concerned that what is being proposed today has two issues. One is the lot density, and the second is the tree preservation plan, and let me just show this graphically. Again, this is what Charlie showed you already, the existing lot density. I have mixed feelings on this. While I and many of my neighbors would obviously love to see less lots here, bigger lots to offer, higher equity homes, we get completely that the project has to meet the financial returns of the developer, of the Kapeski brothers, so I get that. I also understand, I'm not in real estate, but I do understand that there's been a move to smaller lots in the last two decades since our development was initially built. Smaller lots with bigger homes. So, my concern is specifically with Lot 1, the lot immediately adjacent to us. I believe this was already mentioned, Charlie mentioned, the rear setback waiver, which is not how this was initially drawn some months ago. This shows the degree to which this lot is really being sort of pushed in there and encroaching on the wetlands. Sub Lot A, which was deeded to the city, the valuable wetlands there, which we appreciate, this lot is really being pushed hard up against them with the setback waiver. That's a concern to us. So I'll leave that with you. I don't know, frankly, I can't speak to the financial returns of the development, whether it would be possible to put less lots in there. What I will say is that I think, even with that lot density, with some changes I'd like to discuss to the tree preservation plan, I think the equity in our current neighborhood could be preserved, and the financial returns that the Kapeski brothers deserve could be achieved. So let's talk about that tree preservation plan. We had some detailed discussion, I appreciate you initiating this, Mr. Case, based on your walkthrough of the tree preservation plan. I like to sort of look at this big picture, and if we can zoom in a little bit, this shows the entire four acres. My concern, and the concern of my neighbors, simply put, is that every tree in here that's xed, it's hard to make out, is what is defined in the city ordinances as, I think, a significant tree, something bigger than 12 inches, and I did my best, I downloaded the 560-page document, didn't get very far through it, but tried to understand that. But what is happening here is that this is a completely treed lot. All that has been marked are those trees greater than 12 inches. There's many, many trees here that are very close, 11 inches, I've measured them. So what this really doesn't really show is that while this dotted line around here shows what is being preserved, what it sort of fails to get across is the extent to which this whole area, size of a football field, will essentially be clear-cut, scraped bare. That may not cause much comment, but I think what, looking at the current plan in isolation, fails to get across is what happens if you put the existing neighborhood next to it. And I'm not an artist, not an architect, but what I've tried to do here, using plans from 17 years ago, from, I think, 2000, which is the HTPO plan for what's currently called Pines 2, Dove Court coming through it, is the market difference. You don't have to zoom in on this to understand the market difference, left versus right. Left is essentially clear-cut, scraped bare, sort of token trees left around the outside versus in the existing neighborhood. You can clearly see the demands that were put on Carlston Inc. at the time, that frankly must have been quite difficult to deal with, but we're glad that Eden Prairie insisted on these to save, and these areas inked in here are the existing trees that were saved, which gave considerable tree canopy to the existing neighborhood, and gave the neighborhood the character that it has. Again, I'm a visual guy, and I think the best way to look at this is this, is to see in actuality, some 16, 17 years on, what was accomplished, and sort of kudos to the then-city council, because it's worked magnificently. If you look at this drawing and look at the tree canopy, it's fantastic. These trees are uniquely, these custom homes are uniquely nestled in the tree canopy, and it's worked beautifully. This beautiful four acres that the Kapeski brothers own is essentially going to be clear-cut and made to look like a field. Yes, we understand, 30 years from now, with some replanting, it may look a little better, but there is going to be a substantial mismatch, we believe, between the look and feel of what got myself, my neighbors, to buy into this neighborhood, invest in these custom homes, versus what goes in here. And our concern is that without the very features that got us to move to this neighborhood, being guaranteed in this new piece of land, the developer may not get the premium buyers that are needed, and may not get the return he needs. The last thing we want to see is this ideal, clear-cut, scrape, this land, clear-cut, scrape bare, and then sit, year after year, because there aren't buyers. So very quickly, let me just take you on a walkthrough of the neighborhood. Dove Court, this is sort of a close-up showing how the houses are nestled in. This is the neighbor on the south side of the street. Yes, you can't see the house well, and that's the point. It's nestled in the existing trees. My neighbor, immediately to the north, beautiful willow trees preserved. Looking east now down Dove Court, again, you can see the extent to which the tree canopy was preserved. And what I would say, and this is sort of ironic, this came up in the city council meeting, is that, and I want to quote this again, Matt Born, the manager of Parks and Natural Resources, did a nice job of explaining in that meeting how the tree, the city's tree ordinance is now much more restrictive than it was 20 years ago, and that's super. I don't think heritage trees were even defined 20 years ago. That's all good. Our concern is that despite these more, what I would call, tree-friendly ordinances today, we're still basically, sort of somewhat casually, we feel, despite the more restrictive ordinances today, we're somewhat casually scraping this piece of land bare, when the ordinances were not nearly as restrictive some 17 years ago, and that's the disconnect. We feel that it's not going to allow consistency in valuation with the homes that are going in there. So, if you do this walkthrough, and some of you obviously know this neighborhood, you get the sense, big existing trees, trees that may have, may not have been judged significant trees 12 inches or more years ago, now are, obviously. On 82nd Street, the same thing, these houses clearly nested under the canopy. Our neighbor, Chris Groat, as you come into the development, beautiful house, some beautiful trees preserved there. So to sum it up, I mean, our concern is this, that there's a little bit of a double standard happening here, a lot of a double standard, frankly. Clearly, Carlston Inc. 17 years ago was required, given some pretty restrictive specifications to work around, to keep the existing canopy, despite a more restrictive tree ordinance today, the same standard, the current developer of the proposed Kapeski second addition is not being held to the same standard. They're essentially clear-cutting, leaving some beautiful trees around the circumference, but it's just that, around the circumference. And if you sort of zoom back out again and look at this, look at the tree canopy here, what we fear is that we're going to have something that looks a lot like this, an open field, essentially, with some token trees replanted to, you know, some years on. So I'll pause there. I've taken a lot of your time, and I appreciate your attention in hearing me out here, but the ask is simple, it's that the tree preservation plan be reconsidered to be more consistent with the existing neighborhood, of which this extension is clearly going to be an integral part. I'll pause there. Thank you.
Thank you. Very thorough presentation, and it's a beautiful neighborhood. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that wants to address the council? Okay. Do you have things for the camera also, or do you want to speak from the podium? Okay.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Rick Wall. I live with my wife, Laura Wall, who's in the audience, and my three girls on Dove Court. I'm immediately adjacent to Steve Davies as my neighbor. I've been in our neighborhood for, we moved here in 2009, and us, along with our three girls, have very much enjoyed it, and I appreciate all the work the council has done to make this the greatest city in America. It's right up on the poster, so thank you for that work, and I know you spent a long time and put in plenty of hours to get us there, so thank you for that. It was certainly something that attracted us to this neighborhood. I would, first of all, I echo my neighbor's comments, he's much more eloquent than I, and his, in the end, his ask is, "Let's treat this new development the same way we treated the existing Pines 2 development," and that's more or less what I have to say. I'd say we do that in two ways, one with tree preservation, and the second one is making certain that the inputs on the homes that are there are consistent with the inputs on the homes that are in the existing Dove Court Pines 2 development. A couple of things I'll just point out, I've kind of gotten up to speed with this whole development process over the last couple of weeks, and I learned a lot of new things. Now, one of the things is to better understand what's going on in the property, what's happened there recently, and council member Case, you mentioned you walked through the property, and I'll tell you, one of the reasons why the whole issue of trees is elevated in my mind, because as I walked through the property the other day, I saw things that I was surprised to see, and I don't know, I'm right in the middle of the red dot. Is that a good place to be?
Yep, you've got it on.
Okay. So you ask about heritage trees, and there are six heritage trees listed on the report that I had, and I don't know if it's been modified or not. Of those six trees, four are going to be eliminated. When I walked through the property, I took a few pictures of trees, and I don't, didn't see any tags on them, so I don't know anything about whether they're on the count or not, but these were all within the building envelope, and these are all different trees that are on the property right now. So when we worry about saving two of the existing heritage, six heritage trees, I'm making the assumption that these trees all are not included in that count, and you can see why, as neighbors, it kind of elevates our enthusiasm about what's left. I mean, the pictures Steve showed you, if you went back a couple of years ago, I think you'd see the canopy even fuller. And I know for sure you would, because unfortunately, I just lost the tree in the front of my house. It was a beautiful 85-year-old basswood tree that was there when we came, but it was lost to a storm. So these ones, none of these are duplicate pictures. I didn't take any that were out of the building area, and I didn't go down into the wetland area where there's some things going on. So these, you know, clearly weren't acts of nature, but it does raise my concern about how this property will look when it're all done. And Steve, I think, did a good job of pointing out that when you look at what the plan will show, I mean, Mr. Howley shows us a beautiful developer's plan with the green grass and the pretty trees. What it doesn't show is the scraped earth of most of that piece of property. I applaud them for the trees that they're saving around the edges, but I'm not exactly certain that the property will be a true reflection of what it once was when this is all done, and part of that is because of what I've seen, actually, that's happened on the site. So, the fate of those trees that I showed you pictures of is all sealed. I just, I'm coming to you as a council to help us, have you help us encourage a developer to save some of those trees that are in the area, consistent with the way they did it when they built the original Pines 2. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wall. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the audience?
My name is Laura Wall, and I live at 18266 Dove Court. I just wanted to bring your attention to the planning commission meeting minutes from the March 27th meeting, where Mr. Farr asked Mr. Kapeski if he would proceed with the project if there were seven lots versus eight lots. We did not receive an answer. Mr. Kapeski spoke about some other things, but didn't directly give us a yes, or the council a yes or no answer, and councilperson Weber said he feels this is more of a seven-lot development, and I just want to say, I believe that seven lots would be much better for everyone concerned. I think we could save more trees. I request that perhaps a seven-lot rather than eight-lot development be looked at.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wall. Anyone else from the audience? Okay, council, do you have questions for the proponent or staff? Comments?
I'd probably rather close the public hearing, but as long as everyone's done.
That's fine. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Issues you wish to discuss, Mr. Case?
I really appreciate the presentations and comments from the neighbors, because I think it's so helpful to us on the council to, at the very minimum, hear people's perspective, but also to pick up ideas and understandings, and it just helps us, whether we agree or not, or however we come out, it helps us to feel stronger about the decision that we end up making, because we feel like we've heard a broader perspective, so thank you. Thank you for taking the time, and we've learned since, many of us have been on here for a long time, that every issue has multiple, multiple sides, and you never please everybody, and we just are all up here trying to do the very best we can for the city. the city. So I have a couple comments, just in general, made me think, I'm not trying to respond back to what people said, it just made me think of things that maybe can help me clarify for myself or others. Infill projects are always difficult, and the longer they wait to develop within a city, they become more difficult. So the idea of taking a five-acre parcel today, and I'm not saying you said this, but developing it the same way we did, say, 30 years ago is impossible, because 30 years ago it was in the context of sitting in the middle of 200 acres, today it's sitting in the middle of completely developed land, so there's always more difficult. What has stayed consistent are, well, except when we change them occasionally slightly, but our ordinances. So our ordinances have helped us administer our master guide plan since 1968 as consistently as we can, and that's what, that's what makes the development process consistent. That being said, we give variances out, but we give variances not to hand them out like candy, but to help the city gain something, so we'll give a variance if people cluster a house, houses at the top of a hill and save the bluff, or we'll give variances, in this case, to preserve wetland, so we give variances when the city gains, not, not just to help a developer. We're not in the business of helping a developer make money, or not make money, we're in the business of managing development as well as we can. So, in theory, a developer on this land could come in and build 10 homes, I guess you could even argue from, well, Rick, don't quote me on this, but from some kind of a legal perspective, they have rights, based on our pre-guided, you know, two and a half units per acre, to build 10 homes. They'd have to fill wetland to do it, they'd have to mitigate it two to one, we would have to approve that, they'd have to take down every single tree, that, you know, but in theory, there's, there's a potential of 10 lots there, so when they come in with eight, and they've come in, and even though you're right, they didn't carve it around every tree, but they carved it around all the wetlands, and carved it around the big heritage, some of the big heritage trees, so there's been a lot of, clearly a lot of work that's gone in, there's back and forth with staff and all the, the two planning The tree preservation ordinance in general, which Nancy and I were proud to be founders of back in 1995, one of the first, I think it was the first of its kind in the state, I think, Rick, I know it was prior to you, but, and Janet's shaking her head, it was, we always walked a fine line between what the law would allow us to do, or what we'd be potentially sued on some day, so we felt even our law, at the time, we were pretty radical, I think, but we always were careful about owner rights, owner, in this case, the Kapeskis, but also, once the land got developed, we were just talking down in the meeting tonight, and you were just saying, what if we worked so hard to preserve all these trees, and then the new owners of all these properties come in, they take them down? Can they do that? Yes. We hope that they would love these trees as much as we love them, and that you've got this beautiful, by the way, they were listed as bur oak, but I went out there today, and I know my trees, they're white oaks, but chuck on that somebody, I don't know how they all got listed as bur oaks, but I'm sure they're white oaks, but they're beautiful, and they're, they're huge and large, and so I would hope that an owner of that new property would see it as an asset and value that, that's what our hope is. But we've, you know, we've toyed with the idea of, do we step into individual landowner rights, and we haven't gone there, we don't want to go there. You say, one of you took a tree down because of wind damage, well, what if it was kind of partly damaged, and the city came to you and said, you can't take it down, we've just never gone there, we don't want to go there. And so in that same light, though, we're careful with a landowner who has four acres of land, and we've, our tree preservation ordinance does not keep anybody from cutting any tree down, it incents, or incentivizes, I think they're both correct, people to save them. That's, so, can a developer come in and take all the trees down? Yes, we, you know, would we likely approve that? I don't know, but they still have those rights to do that. Our, our tree preservation ordinance has been successful because we had the right incentives in there. And when, you kept saying that we've strengthened it, made it stronger, in essence, we actually weakened it the last time we revised it, partly because we've been so successful at, we now are so treed, our tree people tell us we're more treed today in Eden Prairie than any time in the history of Eden Prairie back 50,000 years. You may or may not believe, or you may not agree that it's the right kinds of trees, or it's not those wonderful, you know, Prairie Oaks Savannah, but, but we have been incredibly successful, and it's to the point now where some of these places where we took down 10 big old trees, they planted 30 little baby trees, those 30 little baby trees are huge now, and now they come in to redevelop, and those 30 trees have to be replaced by 70 trees, I mean, we can't, we can't even do it anymore. So we, we changed our ordinance, not to weaken it, but to be more practical today, so I would say in some sense, you could argue it's not as strong, but it's appropriately not as strong. I'm almost done here, sorry. Gosh, I think I did cover it all. And again, I wasn't trying to argue back, I just wanted to clarify that, that our job really is to do the best we can, and fairly to grant development where we think it's the best for the city, this is coming in at eight houses. I'm comfortable with the variances on the north side, because they're, they're getting something for us, they're getting the wetland preserved and saved. The eight houses is less than the 10, I wish they would save a few more trees, and I guess, I guess I'd send the recommendation back to the developer, as, as I would think every developer wants to do, because it enhances the value when they sell the houses, because you all bought your houses in, in the second subdivision, because you were so appreciative of the tree canopy. So I, developers aren't dumb, they're smart, they, I would think they would want to save as much as possible. The only thing I will add, and in conclusion, is that we have, for 20 years, talked about trying to connect neighborhoods, and it's so painfully hard, but we have an opportunity here in this, no one, you may not agree with me, and I don't know that it would force something into the developer they wouldn't like, but any child that lives on that cul-de-sac toward the end in your homes, to get out of it has to walk all the way back around, I drove in, what, Druxor or something, and took a left on Dove or something, if you put just a public right-of-way easement between lots two and three, and ran a trail just right out to Dell, you would connect two neighbor, three neighborhoods with Dell, and with the bike trail on Dell. So that's all I'm going to say, nobody else, if it doesn't resonate, it's fine, but I just think we haven't done a good job at our, in our city over the years of connecting these neighborhoods, and that's, this is a golden opportunity to do it, you just slide things back 10 feet, run a variance, and it may or may not work, but I would like to, I'd like to.
Not a variance, but an easement.
An easement. Sorry, thank you, thank you, thank you, an easement just down between those two lots. That's all I've got, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, I agree with you with the eight houses is probably appropriate, given, now I do have a question for the developer or planning staff, what's the anticipated price point for houses going into this, given the expected price of the lots and the expected price of the houses? I know I went over Hennepin County valuation for all of Dove Court, every house, and, you know, looked it up, what it was valued at at the moment, but what is the expectation?
Your honor, councilmember Nelson, my understanding from the developer, they can correct me if anything changes, that they anticipate the average to be about $800,000 per property, including the lot and the home.
So they are going to be worth significantly more than what's on Dove Court?
You know, it depends exactly where you look, but I would, I would say more commensurate with the area, I wouldn't say substantially more, and you, you've looked at some of the values, there are, there's a variety, and some of them are a bit less, but as you head east, some of them are a bit more.
Yeah, I, I had looked, and they seemed to run between $500,000 to $700 and some thousand for the largest, more next to the wetland, less next to the street, which would be expected. But, so we potentially will have homes priced commensurate with the rest of Dove Court, if not perhaps slightly more expensive. So I'm not sure, the fear is that these will be small, cheap houses are necessarily going to go, and I see a lot of hands, they, they don't agree that that's what these are going to be. On the other hand, it's a lot more expensive to build houses now, too, so if you look at your own insurance valuation, you may find that there's no way you could sell it for that. At least it wasn't when I sold mine, to say the least. What kind of ash tree is there in the wooded area on this property? Are these trees that are being taken down, you know, are ashes involved, or is it mostly an oak, maple?
Green ashes.
Yeah, there's a number of green ash.
Your honor, councilmember Nelson, there are quite a few green ash on the property, and some of them are scheduled to remain, and quite a few are also scheduled to be removed, so there's.
Is green ash the type of ash tree that gets Emerald Ash for?
Yes, it is.
So that's also a consideration for what you keep, too, because we know we have it inside of Eden Prairie all of a sudden, and, you know, those trees, once they get it, they're pretty much unfortunately gone. So that also takes it, you know, into account, I wouldn't bend over backwards trying to save a tree that's likely to be gone within 10 years, maybe a lot less. But I do like the fact that the developer is taking good care of wetland, and trying to put together something that will have a certain amount of tree cover, and perhaps once they get the actual layouts, I would encourage planning staff between now and final reading, to see if there isn't some other trees that could easily be saved by the proposed driveways and house placement, because lots are more valuable. I was on the planning commission before coming onto here, and I would have been on here on the original Dove, I don't really remember in that year, any extraordinarily bending over background to save every tree. And I think the developer did know, like many do, that trees add value to lots and homes, and they keep them when they can. Are they planning on absolutely clear cutting, or are these the ones they think they're probably going to have to take, certainly anything under a street or a house has to go? But are these absolute, they're going to take them down before building, or is this anticipated? No matter if the developer can answer it.
Your honor, councilmember Nelson, I think the developer would be willing to speak to that, but my understanding is a lot of the grading is needed for driveway access and the like, and drainage, so they can give you more details.
Madam mayor, councilors, the current plan is, is to grade this out, in which it might be hard to assume you can save a tree, and then the, the house plan gets set, and then you can't. Now, the developer is working with a couple of different custom home builders, and the plan is to contract with one to do all of the lots, and there'll be custom homes, and if that happens in such a time in the process, that we can maybe put the brakes on it and reevaluate a certain lot based on a certain house floor plan configuration, we absolutely have the opportunity to make some minor adjustments and potentially save a couple trees. It's a timing thing.
Yeah, no, I assume it'll be saved when it can be, because.
Yes, absolutely.
You do get more money that way. It's, it's really too bad that there are a lot of ash on this place, I think it's something we're going to be coming up with.
You counted 22 on the list.
Oh my, that's, that's a lot of trees that are.
About a fifth of the trees.
Yeah, and that does make it different, you know, people may go home in their own lots in Eden Prairie and start looking at where they have ash trees, and what kind of long-term planning they might be to replace something that will put a canopy when that one has to go, now, before, you know, where you've got three, four years hopefully growth on it. But I guess we're going to discuss that later, now that, this has just come up this last week or two, but I guess I'm satisfied with it, I don't know if they'll make exactly the same style houses, because architecture changes a little bit over 15 years, and they may be similar, they may be a little different, but that's okay, a lot of neighborhoods have a lot of different styles of homes in them, from a lot of different architects, so, as long as every, you know, as long as they are going to be willing to be development when at various stages, I guess I'm okay with it, and I hope they would pick a tree to save if they have two choices, that is, one is not ash, and then the one they save is some other varietal, as that would make a long-term difference to the neighborhood by keeping the type of tree that's apt to be healthier.
Councilmember Alho.
I guess, in terms of the project, you know, in terms of lot, some of the things that were brought up were lot density and tree preservation plan. In terms of lot density, to me, it looks like the lot density is pretty consistent with the existing neighborhood, I don't see a huge disparity between the lot density, it looks, if you look at the plan, it looks like a, pretty much a continuation of the similar-sized lots. I know it's never going to be exactly the same, but I don't think it's going to be so different that you're, when you're driving down the street, you know, 10 years from now, you'd say, wow, this is totally different, what happened here, I think it looks consistent enough. And, I mean, trees, we all, I think we all agree, we want to save as many trees as we can, I mean, we're all for that, and so I think the developer will, will want to, so I, I'm not as concerned about the tree density, obviously, it's going to change a lot from where it is right now, I mean, right now, it's a complete forest, basically, and that's going to change, and I know that's hard when you're living there, and you, you get used to that, that look, and it's going to be a big change to see those trees taken down, and that's going to be a shocker for those, those existing homes and residents, but unfortunately, the same thing happened when their homes were developed as well, those trees had to be taken down for their homes, and I don't think we, we can, we can't stop a development because of that. I mean, if the, if a development comes to us and it meets our guide plan and our zoning, we have to, you know, pretty much by law, we have to evaluate it based on that, and so I, I see that it looks like everything meets our guide plan, our zoning, I'm, I'm in favor of the project, and I think the value of the homes is there.
Some of us were on the council when that Carston portion was done, and I don't recall being heavy-handed at all with the tree preservation, I think he was just very interested in the, the beauty of the land, and took it upon himself to make sure that clumps of trees were saved, but it, it really wasn't a pressure thing from the council at that point. So it's hard, because he, he did such a nice job with that neighborhood, it's hard to force somebody else that's got land to develop in exactly the same way, we would encourage that, and I think it's pretty clear from the five of us up here talking, that we all really value trees on property, and that would be a plus for us personally if we were to buy those lots, so hopefully there'll be an effort made to preserve it, as much as could be done. Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Yeah, I concur really with what my fellow council members have said tonight. I have been in this situation myself, where I actually lived at the end of a cul-de-sac that was property owned by someone else, and boy, it was very painful when it was developed, it became a part of, you know, sort of who we were, and what the color of the, the green, you know, it, but what I can tell you, if this helps at all, is that we got neighbors, and our children played with the, it became a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood, it just was awkward at the very beginning, because we were so used to seeing the neighborhood in a certain way. I think the waivers are reasonable, I think the waivers, considering three of them are specifically about that outlot, and the outlot is deeded to the city for the benefit of all residents, so I, I would like to make a motion if, oh, I think I'll make a motion. So, I move to adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 4.14 acres, and approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers, and zoning district change from rural to R1-13.13.5 on 4.14 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 4.14 acres into eight lots and one outlot, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff, and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, councilmember Case.
Well, thank you, I just want to verify what Sherri just said, it just says in item four on page two, that the wet, that the outlots form to protect the wetland, but it doesn't say in that paragraph that it's deeded to the city, so who owns the wetland?
My understanding from talking to staff, I asked about. My understanding from talking to staff, I asked about the language and that the outlot, the development agreement will contain a condition that the outlot be deeded to the city. People use the word dedicated. You can't dedicate a wetland. You can dedicate park. We don't want to designate it as park. So it'll be a requirement of the development agreement that it be deeded to the city.
Okay. And then I would like to allow each of you the opportunity to disagree with me and that's fine. So I want to put it into an amendment. So I would like to make an amendment that a trail be put between lots two and three. And if you look at three, because it's the largest lot, I think, in the entire development, I think you could take most of it off of that lot. And so I would move that we stipulate that a walking trail that will connect then probably over 50 homes with a direct access out onto Dell be a part of this agreement.
I would be very agreeable to that. I think that we have several parks on the other side of the street there that these people are going to want to access, bike trails, all kinds of stuff. Access into Miller Park, access over to Jan Hassen through the park system there. I think that would make a lot of sense.
I will second it officially, the amendment.
Okay, we'll vote, can we vote on the amendment?
Yes, you vote on the amendment first.
All in favor of the amendment for looking into or requiring adding?
Adding it, but you can bring it back in second reading and if there are issues...
They're going to address it there.
Yeah. Robert had a...
Yeah, Madam Mayor and councilmember Case. Let us take a look at our water and sewer easements and where might be a good place to locate this exactly, but I think we understand the intent.
Okay.
And I think we can work with the developer to try to find the best, most appropriate location.
Sounds great.
All right. There's a motion, a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now, well...
Do you need to vote on the...
Yeah, we'll vote on the original motion, which councilmember Aho, I believe, made. Oh, councilmember Butcher-Wextrom, yes. All in favor of the motion.
I did make it, yeah.
I did. All in favor of the motion.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight and expressing your concerns. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question there? Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wextrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Okun. Aye. The next item is under ordinances and resolutions and we're asking for approval for the first reading of an ordinance amending city code section 9.05 relating to the uniform fire code and other fire regulations. Mr. Getchell, you're doing that?
Yes, yes, thank you, mayor and council. This is simply an update of our city code to amend and be consistent with all references to the Minnesota State Fire Code and the International Fire Code. So really, a housekeeping item to line up our code with those other codes.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I would...
Your motion. Go ahead.
Sorry. I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending city code section 9.05 relating to the uniform fire code and other fire regulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passing, passes. Under reports of council members, I just wanted to mention that we are halfway through our participation in this month's Weyland Foundation My Water Pledge. And the Weyland Foundation was created by, I don't know if you knew this, it was created by an artist whose name is Weyland. And this is the guy who does a lot of big murals of whales all around the world. He's done 100 different murals of whales. He does a lot of the art that you see for sale on T-shirts and posters at zoo stores. He's a very famous, well-known artist and he created this foundation to draw attention to the importance of marine wildlife and the importance of keeping clean oceans and clean waterways. So one of the things that they do to educate people is to increase their awareness of the importance of conserving water and energy, both. And so we have been asked, we're one of many cities across the country that are participating in a competition, really, to get as many citizens as possible to sign on with their own water pledge. So if you're interested in doing this, you can go to mywaterpledge.com on the computer and address some questions about what you are going to do to try to conserve energy and water. And as an added bonus, they are giving away a Toyota Prius and hundreds of other prizes to lucky winners. So we've participated in this, how many years, six years?
This will be our seventh.
Seventh year. And we've done pretty well in this competition and I don't really care that much about whether we're in first or second place. The important thing is that people learn about different ways that they can save water and keep our water system clean. That's the important thing, so.
Mayor, for people that do care, halfway through, we're 12th nationally right now.
Oh, we were fifth.
So, yeah, but after your brief remarks there, we're going to get back in the top five.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Okay, we have a report from the Park and Rec Direktor, Mr. Lothammer, about Riley Lake Park improvements.
Yes, your honor, councilmembers, we're here tonight to bring you up to speed and fill you in on the efforts we've been making at Riley Lake Park, both from a master planning standpoint, but also we're getting ready to go out to bid and so we've gone through some pretty good designs for it as well. You'll notice in the PowerPoint presentation that we have tonight with a lot of the design schemes and also some of the suggested types of materials that we would use, that one of the themes that we have in play and we've been talking about all along is our residence resort. And when you think about Lake Riley and what people do there, from boating and fishing, water skiing, going to the beach, swimming, picnicking, it really does fill that place as a resort in our community, easy to drive through, easily accessible. So that's really one of the themes that we've used. And as I talk a little more about the history of Lake Riley, it'll become even more apparent of why that theme is in play. But I want to give you some context first. Riley is one of our larger community parks. And over the years, a lot of those parks were built around the same time and have needed some renovation. And so if we go back just a few years to Miller Park and the barrier-free play structure that's there and some of the work we've been doing on the ball fields, Round Lake, going back to the beach and the pavilion renovation, as well as the splash pad and the impact that that's had, as well as then what we're about to open next year with the ball field renovation, going back in and things that have been there for 25 and 30 years, really taking a look at what makes sense today and correcting some of those things that maybe have gone wrong over time just by wear and tear. And so those are things that we've been able to accomplish at all of these locations. The very last one, Starring, what we were able to do there and the reception that it's received from the public at that community park is something that we're really proud of and glad that we were able to do. All these things, we tend to make come along at a time that we think is really appropriate. And one of the reasons for the timing of this project is we've really been waiting for the pavement in the parking area at Riley to fail. It's had some years left into it, but now it's at a time where it's outlived its useful life and so we need to come in and do that. And as we talk a little bit more about the parking area and what the new design would achieve, we've had that in the capital improvement program budgeted. We've got another portion of this that is kind of a phase B, that is more of the beach area and the accessibility of the rest of the park that we are also proposing that we would undertake at this time as well. And we'll tell you how we would fund that as well as we go along. So if you think about the history, and there is a lot of rich history down at that park, tonight we won't even be touching or talking much about the Riley Jakes Barn and the homestead and really that portion of the property, but more of the property that is towards the south. And even there, there's a lot of rich history. When you go back to the Lantern Inn, you go back to Duchess Resort, some of the areas that were there that people would come and if you read some of the history, would pay a nickel to go swim at that beach or pay a quarter to go and rent one of the boats that are there. So for the longest time, this really has been used as the people's resort. They haven't necessarily had to own that property to be able to go to use it. And as the city then continued to acquire that land over time, it really has continued to be a place that at a low or no cost, you can go and have somewhat of a resort experience. Also, in the history, not too many years ago, you would drive down there and you would say, what are these houses doing in the middle of the park? And that's always been an intent to acquire that property. The method that caused that to be is when the road on Pioneer Trail was upgraded, that had to be widened and they took a lot of Starring Lake Park frontage. And so the county, by doing that project, needed to acquire land on our behalf to replace that parkland. And so what a lot of us know is Ernie Schulheis's house, that was acquired. And the nice part is it was at a time in his time of owning the house where it worked well for him as well. So that area that you see that's in the picture, south of the parking lot, there were a couple of homes that were there as recently as about five years ago, when then it was acquired and the homes were removed and it really became part of the parkland. That is a key to how we are able to redevelop this parcel and redevelop the parking area. So again, that final site acquisition, the other piece that I'd want to point out is along the beach, that's what used to be known as Riley Lake Road and it really became converted into a park road. And for a time, it worked okay, but as we'll show you, some of the safety concerns and how we can rectify that, it's really important that we do do that. In order for us to get design input, we have people that from our staff are there on a regular basis that are doing maintenance, that are doing water activities. We have people that oversee our beach area that are on site. And so we really brought in all of our internal staff that have an impact or also program out of that park. We engaged WSB as our landscape architect and I think that's important. We've had good success with them. They did the design at Starring Lake. They also completed the design at Round Lake as well. And so we've had really good success working with them on those two projects and many other projects that we've done. We've sat down with Let's Go Fishing a couple of different times, one in the very beginning to really learn what their needs were. I think you'll see a little later on, we've really accomplished that in terms of safe drop-offs and accessibility for them to reach their dock, also some of their storage needs to support their programs. The watershed district, Matt and other city staff have met with them multiple times to help understand our best practices with stormwater and how we can capture that and treat that. You know, being right at the lake, we want to make sure we do as good a job as we can with that. And you'll see in our plan how that does enter into the design. Some cases, it's a trade-off between some trees and sometimes we end up planting some more trees in those storm ponds, but we'll be capturing a lot more stormwater than we have in the past and treating it before it goes into the lake. We've also worked with Three Rivers Park District. There is the regional trail that goes by there. We need to cross that. We want to make sure that they're okay with some of the impacts that this might have. Next Monday, the Riley Lake Association, we're going to be meeting with them. They reached out to Mr. Getchell indicating that they'd seen parts of the plan and wanted to know a little bit more. So we're going to talk them through that. Going to the planning commission next Monday and then also multiple Parks Commission meetings. They've been really instrumental and it's amazing how many people on our commission use that park for many different activities, from boating to Boy Scout activities to having kids in the camps. So they've been really valuable to us. What you are going to see, and Matt's going to walk us through some of the more detailed designs coming up in the master plan, but again, you're going to see more stormwater retention than what you see there now, both in the parking areas as well as just in certain areas of the park itself. You're going to see conversion of native grasses from mowed areas. We have some hillsides we've been mowing for quite a long time. As we do the work, we'll convert that into native grasses. And then also the trees. There are some trees that need to be removed. If you go back kind of in Ernie's backyard, he had a nice mowed lawn, but you go back a little bit further and it had just been left to grow. And we'll show you some photos of what that looks like and, but some of those need to be removed in order to accommodate the parking. But I will tell you that every effort has been made, the parking lot moved two degrees here and five feet back here and as best we can to save as many, especially of the good trees, as possible. And I think what you think of as that really nice canopied area where a lot of people picnic under it back from the beach stays untouched. All of the trees there are untouched and really, I think, enhanced by having some more defined areas and some harder surfaces to do the picnicking on so people aren't necessarily dragging picnic tables across and potentially disrupting root systems and things. So you'll see some of that, some of the design themes, again, in addition to the residence resort, safety. We've been hearing that for a long time. And in fact, if you go back to the 2008 park system plan, it's even mentioned in there with looking at acquiring some more property. People have been parking for a long time on Pioneer Trail on the busy boating days that's there, that are there. You see some safety of when you're backing trailers up, pedestrian, car, boat conflict, we've heard a lot about that. And now's the time that we can correct that and I think you'll see some methods to be able to do that. Also, when I mentioned circulation, there are a lot of people that use that park and I think what you'll see in the plans is circulation even goes to accessibility. And that's better accessibility to the beach, it's better accessibility to the boat launches and even moving in and around through the parks. It has kind of been left in an open, grassy area, but for people with mobility, strollers, wheelchairs, we've learned a lot, especially at Round Lake, that we've also incorporated into this plan that impact the beach area and give people a lot better accessibility and shade. And then those environmental improvements, again, you're going to see us adding those grasses, adding better storm capture and really taking care of the environment that is around there. And I think people will notice that there are those environmental features when the park design is finished. So this takes us back to that old aerial. This goes back to 2006, when you still see those houses left in place, but shortly after that, they were removed, have been used as part of the park, although still feels very separated. So the master plan that Matt will walk you through will show you how the new design comes into play and what many of those benefits of the new design are.
Thanks, Jay. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, as you can see, this is the master plan that was developed this winter, working with WSB and the different groups that Jay had mentioned before. We tried to make sure that we got some feedback and everybody kind of that uses this part quite a bit was involved in the process. So you can see that the increased parking, which was kind of our initial reason for doing this project, we've done quite a bit of moving that around. The existing entrance would kind of comes in really down in here. The boat launch actually stays in place, so that's where it is currently. So you can see there's quite a bit of difference in this plan than what's currently out there as far as circulation, trying to keep pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic separated. With the way it is there now, there's quite a bit of safety concern where we have trails and sidewalks that come in. Now they have to come and use that narrow road that boats with, or trucks with trailers are using, they're backing up, difficult to see. So really, we're able to separate the pedestrians from the vehicular traffic on this plan. But we wanted to also improve the accessibility and circulation throughout the site. So as we started to get into this project and looked at the parking lot, we knew we were going to have to do a lot more than just rearrange the parking lot to improve the circulation throughout the whole park area. You can see that we've added a loop trail back behind through here. Really, that was from lifeguards and other users that had concerns with kids going back and forth between the picnic area and the beach, that you get a lot of bike traffic coming through there. It's a great connection to the LRT trail. A lot of times, there was some near misses and stuff there. So really, now with the design, you can kind of, you can see this trail right through here really pushes them up this way and around to connect to the LRT trail. Now, they'd be able to be a lot easier access between the picnic area and the beach and cross-access to be able to do that. And then we also wanted to add some lake shore amenities that I'll walk you through a little bit more in depth later on. But as Jay had mentioned, with Let's Go Fishing, we've really, we've added this area here as a bus drop-off for them, but it's also a staging area for people with boats that are coming in that maybe need to take their tarp off the boat or take straps off. are coming in that maybe need to take their tarp off the boat or take straps off, get life jackets out, that type of stuff. They'll be able to use that area, but also the Let's Go Fishing now can pull their buses off to the side and not get in the way of people coming in trying to launch their boat. And so we've added a couple of lake shore viewing areas or seating areas. Next to that is a bus unloads, they can go and gather in that spot, wait for their boat to come back in, unload the group that's out there and then they'd be able to load. And then when that's not in use, residents can go watch the sunset there. We'll be doing a lot more higher-end kind of benches, Adirondack chair-type things there, where if somebody wanted to come in, spend a day at the park and then sit in the Adirondack chairs, watch the sunset, they'd be able to do that there.
How many parking spots are you going to have for boats and trailers?
So with the plan now, we'll have 23. Currently, there's 14. So we'll add nine stalls, which we think will take a lot of the people that are parking up on Pioneer Trail or up in the other parking lot, kind of take those out of there and be able to handle them right in the parking lot here. You can see that we don't have any regular vehicular parking there. It's solely dedicated for boat and trailer traffic. And then we added ADA or handicap parking there. So that was something that, we had a couple of stalls down there, but they weren't very, they weren't marked very well. It was very difficult to understand where they could and where they couldn't park. So now adding a dedicated kind of row for handicap parking, we made sure to add that in as well.
Great, thank you.
So for the project for this year, as we went through, we knew that this would most likely become a phased project, a lot like Round Lake was, a lot like some of our other projects at Miller have been. So this is really the overall layout of what is in the construction plans for this year. You can see the building that we had hoped to construct that would have some changing areas, some additional storage. That's kind of been put off for now. That'll maybe be Phase Two, Phase Three. We're not quite sure how many phases it's going to be, but that would be a later, a phase to be done later on. But you can see that we'll be doing all of the trails, connecting kind of the area, giving that better circulation throughout the park. The parking lot, obviously, will be done and upgraded. And we'll have some more features, again, to better give the site the accessibility that it really lacks right now. We'll have sidewalks and ADA access down to the boat launch, which currently is not there. The beach, we'll be adding a ramp going down, giving access to that, that is currently not there. Adding a lot of those features, as Jay had mentioned, the designated picnic areas, kind of up in the trees, up in that green space, making those accessible or a lot more accessible for users and then also giving them a designated area to go. And so this is a close-up of kind of the beach area. I wanted to include this because I think it shows, it's a little difficult to see, but you can see kind of the green outlines of the trees. WSB, as they were designing this, did a really good job of moving a trail a little bit to be able to save a tree, wrapping it kind of in a circular motion around to be able to save the large oaks and everything that are in that area. They did a really good job of trying to make it fit into the space that they could without having to make, or having to remove trees, but still make it look like it was designed well and planned that way. It kind of all ties together and gives a lot of interest into the area that we think works out well. And so I'll give, show you kind of some of the things that I was talking about. This is one of the seating areas. This was a larger one in the plan, but you can see the types of Adirondack chairs that we're hoping to use, kind of in some of those smaller areas. The tables will do more of a high-top kind of bar-type table, make it more of a collection or a, you know, not really a picnic area, but people can go and gather and, like I said, watch the sunset or watch kids waterski your boat, that type of stuff, so. And then in the designated picnic areas, you know, an upgrade from our normal picnic tables really kind of spruce the area up. Given the different areas, we'll add, you know, either one grill or two grill, we'll have areas that can hold a lot more people, that will be multiple grills, really kind of give a gathering spot for people if they wanted to come and spend a day at the lake, that they can do that. And so here you can see too, a little better, the light green really designed around to save as many trees as we can. And so with that, I'll kind of show you, this is the tree removal plan for kind of that northern part of the park. You can see there's some small 10-inch on the very north that were planted, I would say about 10 years ago, that will have to be removed just to make the grading for the trails work. And then a few of the lindens that are down that were planted around the same time, about five, 10 years ago, to bring that trail, to get that grading to work. But you can see pretty much all of the large oaks that are kind of in what you would think is the picnic area, that big open green space, all of those stay. There are one or two that have a small shoot coming off that have lost limbs. We're going to take those out just for safety and to make some of the trails, we thought be better to take that out, a small 12-inch, than bump it into a big 40-inch or 42-inch. So there's one or two of those, but the biggest area that will have a visual impact will be this area that Jay had mentioned to the south. It's really been an area that's been untouched for quite some time. There's a lot of deadfall in there. There are a lot of nice oaks, some basswood, some cottonwoods, but then there's a lot of undergrowth that's been allowed to grow there. So you can just barely see through the new development right off Pioneer. You know, this is going to be opened up. You're going to be able to see through it now. It's one of the areas to make the grading work. If you're familiar with the area, as you come off Riley Lake Road, it kind of comes up a little bit, but then it drastically goes down to the LRT trail, then comes back up again and then kind of gradually comes down to the lake. To make the entrance drive and everything work, we have to do a little bit more grading and a little bit more tree loss through there, some general grading. And like I said, with a lot of that undergrowth that you haven't been able to see under for a number of years, clearing that out, you'll see a visual impact. But we were happy that we were able to keep, you know, that major impact really is in this location only. But then some of the enhancements that Jay had alluded to that we're going to make sure to do with this project is capturing stormwater. Right now, we don't have any stormwater treatment on the existing parking lot and everything. So we made sure that when we do this parking lot, we're adding a lot more impervious surface that we want to make sure we're capturing all of that rainwater and treating it, so, which is a vast improvement from what's out there now. And then also, it's a little difficult to see, but kind of around the picnic area, you can see there's, this area will be reestablished with turf, but everything that's kind of in this polka dot will all be native grasses. So quite a bit of new native species with pollinator-friendly flowers and plants inside of those. And then some small rain gardens, we're still trying to figure out exactly what's needed, but then some of these will either be native grasses or they'll be small rain gardens. So some new additions that really kind of tie in, we think with that Northwoods field, you know, give it a little bit more of a natural look. Once you get out of the green space in the picnic area, everything around that will really be kind of upgraded with some native plant species. And so here's just a couple of other pictures of some of the site amenities. The squirrel bike rack, just to kind of tie in, quite a bit of oaks out there, so. An upgraded bench from what we have out in the other parks. And then this fence is, will be kind of the area above the retaining wall by the beach, so really tying that wood from the benches and the tables into that fence to give it a little bit, little bit higher end look. And so as I mentioned before in the construction, after we did this master plan, we kind of knew it was going to have to be phased. So the initial part is the parking lot and the trails are going to be our base bid. A lot of the other lakeside seating areas, stuff like that, we're planning on putting in as alternate bids that if pricing comes back and, you know, we're happy with what they're able to do for the price we get, we'll look at adding that in. But we want to make sure that the parking lot and the trails and kind of the infrastructure of the area are put in now. Our hope is that because they'll be, they're doing that work, that we'll get a little more of a discount on the added features, so. And then the, if those aren't done, then that and the building would be scheduled at a later date. Our timeline for construction, after working with Let's Go Fishing and our beach supervisors, other residents, we're going to try and make sure to have as little impact on the park for users as possible. So bid opening, we're hoping to have May 4th with the construction start date after the 4th of July week, so July 10th. But that'll be more up in the kind of south, or in the south and the east away from the beach area, away from the current boat launch. We're going to try and make sure to keep that open as long as possible. So they'll be doing a lot of that mass grading and stuff that I had showed. They'll be starting in that with the rest of the areas not being able to be shut down until August 21st. So that was kind of around the date that our aquatic supervisor who runs a lot of the beaches and the lifeguard says they start going back to college and it becomes difficult to staff anyways. So you kind of see a lot of that use start to drop at that point, so. And then substantial completion this fall with any final completion, any touch-up that they have to do next spring. Because we did push it back so far to make sure that the, it was open for the majority of the summer, we wanted to make sure we gave our contractor a little bit of leeway that we realize we pushed you back. So if you need to come back next spring to do some touch-ups or some seating, they're allowed to do that. And so I'll turn it back over to Jay and he can talk funding.
So doing any of this work really becomes disruptive for a certain period of time. So our hope when we bid this out and if alternate prices come back well, is to do as much as we can in this first sort of foul swoop and so that we'd be in a position down the road, when we come back several years down the road to add the buildings in, that we could more easily drop them in. When we start to do any of the utilities, it tears up a lot of the site. And so we'd like to do that as part of this project. So that's why we have structured this with alternates, so we really know where those prices are and we can accept them or we can reject them. Couple ways of funding, and this is three of kind of the main four of how we've done any of the work in the park system over the many years. Grant, fortunate enough to get a DNR grant for the cleaning station that is not there and will be one of the first in the state of this type of a cleaning station. So when people come out of the lake, they'll be easily able to use the cleaning sources so that the AIS doesn't travel. So we're glad to partner with the DNR on that part of the project. Also, the capital reinvestment funds, that, those are funds that have been set aside and we plan for that handle those things that usually have deteriorated and need to be replaced. So the other pieces that are some of the newer additions, in most cases, we've handled that through Park Improvement Fund or Cash Park Fees. And so as we come back and have our math in front of you in a couple of weeks, when we know what the full price is, it would include some proposed cash park fees to be used in this phase. And hopefully, if bids come back like we hope they will, it will get us most of this project with the exception of the buildings. And the buildings would come at some point in the future and we would be likely using cash park fees at that time in the future in order to add those buildings since they aren't new. In the case that we had buildings that have been there a long time and they are being replaced, that's something that comes in the capital reinvestment. So there's really three sources, two of them are major portions in order to make a project like this work. With that, we'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Councilmember Nelson.
Just one quick thing. I know we do want to save all the trees we can, but I hope that we would take into account ash trees while you're doing the work and take them down and replant appropriate buried trees in their places so we don't have to come back and disrupt what looks like it'll be a beautiful park in a year or two to, you know, take down and do that process. It seems like it would be a reasonable thing to do when we're working in there anyway.
Yeah, Councilmember Nelson, this site doesn't have a lot of ash trees to begin with.
That's good.
And then we do have a plan to replant in quite a few of these areas to add some trees in and certainly there'll be a variety of types of trees and they won't be ash trees.
That's good. I'm just glad that we're starting to think along those lines as we're redoing. So it's probably cheaper to do it as you go and then replant, so.
Good plan. Councilmember Case.
So first, I want to say I like this plan. I think it's great. I think you all have done really wonderful work. I think it really shows a lot of time and effort. I'm sitting here struggling, and so I need really advice from the rest of you, but I'm struggling a little bit with the idea that I've gotten a couple of emails and calls from people already upset and I knew nothing about it. And yet I know that we do approve ahead of time, right, in the grand CIP process. And I knew this was kind of in a pipeline, but I think there's, I think there needs to be a way, this happened at Round Lake where we got calls not knowing, really being ignorant about what was happening with all the trees. The trees came down, in fact, and I didn't even realize trees were coming down. So what I'm asking you, Rick, to lead this, but I think the council should be, get back into this process somehow. I think there may be a way prior to Three Rivers, Riley Lake Association, Planning Commission, Park and Rec, all being involved before we even hear of it, except for approving way, way back in CIP. I think we should be presented upfront and then not for approval, just kind of pick our brains or something and then we send it out. And then all the details go out. And this is not like a development project where there's formality of Planning Commission, neighbors come in. This is a process where this is our park that we're responsible for and we get, not our park personally, but the cities, and we get the responses and we are the ones that take, if there's heat, we take that. So I feel like we're being left out of this process. And so I feel like we need to get back in it. And then that, the other thing is what is it that like, what's a magic number figure that should trigger or kick in our involvement? I'm guessing this is expensive enough that it would hit it. Because I'm not saying, you know, you do a little $10,000. I'm not saying the neighborhood parks or, we know all about those processes. I'm saying this bit, what I'm asking you to do is think about us from a political perspective. When is it that we're going to get the calls? This one, I think, should trigger that and we should somehow be into this process much earlier than tonight. And that's all I'm asking. You all can react any way you want. I just feel like, it's a great project. You all have done great work and I love this and I, it's way overdue and I'm going to be proud of it and I'm glad of all the other input that got put in. I just don't feel comfortable sitting here just hearing about this virtually for the first time.
So to clarify a couple items, I think the only group that's heard about this or it's been presented to is parks. So the other groups that Jay's referring to are next week and the week after. I get your point though, if it would be, you know, last fall or the winter, but I think Jay's referring to some of those meetings are upcoming. So we did want to get this on the calendar before the bids, before the construction. So it might be that some of the response you're getting is anticipation of those meetings that haven't happened yet or being, that are being scheduled.
Neighbors were noticed, right? For those meetings.
Yeah, for, for the Lake Riley meeting next week.
Got noticed prior to us even being aware that it was coming up tonight. That, I just think that, get us involved in the process.
Sure.
And even, even, even though this was in CIP, and I know staff, you've been working so hard at this, Jay, for so long, and you live in and breathe in this, but if you could think maybe six months back, hey, you know, guys, this is coming, this is what we're thinking of, any, any basic thoughts, and we go, hey, this looks cool, yeah, great, go out, then we're not surprised, that's all I'm saying.
Especially if it's public notice, I mean, if it's public notice and people are informed, then they're going to potentially contest.
And then they call us, and I literally knew nothing about it. In fact, my wife texted me, hey, I'm hearing from several people about a concern down at Riley, what's going on? I don't know, there's just something wrong there, that's all I'm saying, just get us, get us notified, especially if a notice to the public goes out, get us notified before that goes out.
It's a large project.
So if I can.
Absolutely. And like a million-dollar price tag or something, trigger, yeah.
Jay?
We'll be at a million. But if I can clarify, we have not sent out public notices. Our history and our practice has been, when it is a neighborhood park, we work with the neighbors, when it's been a community park, we have used the Parks Commission as that sounding board for the entire community to plan and to develop this neighborhood park.
Makes sense.
Couple things that we have recently done at Cedar Hills Park, if you drive by there, it's under construction, but for quite a long time now, there has been a sign there. We've never done a project where we've taken down a tree, cut into the land, where we haven't heard from people who haven't.
Totally.
To say they haven't heard. So we do put it on our project, on the, on the website, we've had it on the project board there, that's a way to keep people up to date. Trying to get, you know, would, would it or wouldn't be a shock, I think when you walk down there, it's not that big of an area, but it's a lot of undergrowth, and when the leaves come out, you can't see through it, you could be standing in Ernie's backyard and you can't see people biking on the trail. If you're standing in that same spot after this project, you, you will see the trail, that will become usable space, not, not necessarily just kind of what's been left to overgrow. So I think our, our processes stayed the same, we have been walking through it with the Parks Commission for quite some time, both to get to the master plan and then to continue to refine that. We have had people that have attended the Parks Commission, I know Mr. Getcho heard from a member of the Riley Lake Association that said they have seen the plan, because certainly our interaction with the Lions Club, Let's Go Fishing, kind of one in the same, that word got out amongst them because they wanted to gain feedback from their boat captains and the other people that drive people down there, so, you know, things kind of at different points in time get out to the public from different sources. The reactions that we've got from those who have seen it or heard about it, coming to us anyway, have been, we think that the concept is really good, we'd like to hear more, and so that's, next Monday night, we'll be at the Lake Association, giving them more details than what.
This is all good, and I've saw, you all, you've done perfect, Jay, I just, get us involved earlier, that's all, let us, just inform us.
Okay, this was informational tonight, there's no vote that needs to be taken, is there anything else to bring before the council tonight? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned.